We're ready to go. I call this meeting to order. And we have to set up a public hearing for a subdivision on Peach Hill Road. Would you like to come up and tell us what you're doing?
It's just a definitive subdivision, call this act on Peach Hill Road. Just need a date and a time and can come in with the plans and...
And we can't use that calendar.
Oh, no.
Where's the town clerk when you want, you know?
It's on map, map 24 block 12. I can do the, I can, I have the abutters list and I have all the registered stuff ready to go. If I have a date and a time, I can insert that.
You should get that figured out.
I never use the calendar on the phone, but it's here.
Yeah. I know how to look at it. I don't know how to set anything on it.
I've got this phantom calendar that my daughter set up that I cannot get rid of. It's just, it's like haunted. Okay, there's days I don't get.
So what do you look up? February 12th is the meeting? Well, Tuesday. Tuesday? Tuesday, 12th. 12th, yeah. Well, the 26th. So the first of those has to be two weeks in advance of it.
That gives us three or four.
About the 29th?
Oh, he shifts one day from last year, right? I wrote that for my wife a few years ago.
I just grabbed this. I just have to write the date.
You got it?
Let's think here a minute. I, we're talking about a hearing on the 11th.
12th.
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 You said Peach Hill?
Yeah.
Map 20 block 12. Map, map 20 block 12.
A definitive plan of a subdivision is submitted to the planning board as provided in chapter 41. It shall also be filed with the Board of Health or Board or Officer having like powers of duty. Such Health Board or Officer shall report to the planning board writing approval or disapproval of such plan. Such Board of Health or Officers shall... The question I have is, if we don't have a plan, right? How do we? How do we set a date and be assured that the plan would be available to the parties that we want to have review it, including our consultant? So are we better? I don't, I want to be timely, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we don't screw ourselves by setting a hearing date with no documents. I mean, we, we can be confident that we're going to get them.
I could have them to you for the 22nd meeting, so you'll have them for then.
Does that give everybody enough time?
Well, you're gonna, we're gonna get them on that date and we're gonna send them to Scott.
There's no wetlands.
And say you got...
There's no wetlands.
Two weeks.
To look at a definiti-, you know? Normally, you go through the preliminary plan process where you have some general dialogue and then... But the, I mean, the provisions are here for you to go straight to a definitive, which is fine. It's, but when there's a definitive plan... See, where no preliminary plan has been submitted and acted upon, the planning board has 135 days after submission to take final action. I mean, the idea is to give you...
Right, time to review.
The time. So all I'm saying is, we can do this, we can do this quickly, but if we set the hearing before everybody's had a chance to look at it, are we just gonna end up extending the hearing? You know, we better off to look at the end of February for the hearing and get the plans from Mark. You know, you give us the stuff on the 22nd and we can get it to everybody. Yeah, we got, you know, 10. Oh, excuse me. What was the camera thing? Watch out, the camera's on.
I won't say anything.
Yeah, I know.
Where are we at now?
Trying to set a hearing.
Huh?
I'm trying to set a hearing for a subdivision on Peach Hill Road.
So does, I don't want to slow things down, but I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here.
It's a two-week delay. That's it.
I think, I think we're more likely to get Scott to, because see, the other thing that can happen is, Scott can get back to you this way and say...
Yeah, tweak this, tweak that.
Tinker here, tinker there, and then we can get it back and not have to extend the hearing, you know? Potentially, right? Is that all right?
Yeah. So submitted to you guys, I'll get the plans here for the 22nd. And then the hearing date would be set for the second meeting in February.
Right.
Yeah.
12 plus 14, 12 plus...
How many copies do we need?
Need the calendar.
Board of Health and Mrs., it's listed in there, isn't it? That would have to be two weeks before in the paper, right?
Yeah.
So the 12th by the 12th. What's the, if that, it only publishes on one day.
The Friday before, so...
So it has to be the 8th.
Yeah.
It's two weeks before is the...
Two weeks before, it has, the notice has to be placed, so...
Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do that.
You'll do that? You think about that?
We'll take care of the paper.
The newspaper.
Okay.
And you've got the list of abutters and the stamps, right?
So what I'll do is, when I get the notice for the public hearing...
Yeah.
Written, and I can email it to you and then you can use that as your text for your notification to the abutters.
Yeah.
So give me, you know, just give me your email address.
It's Kathy with a K.
Usually 10 copies.
Add electronic for Scott.
Yeah.
He likes it electronic.
Then we can do selectmen, fire, police, border health, conservation, planning board. Building inspector, all that.
Can you read that?
Kathy of Roads Realty Associates with an S.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
I put dot com on there, right?
Yeah, and I'll put that together.
Okay.
Quick and then send it to you and then you can...
And with that, you'll have a time? Or do you want to pick a time now?
It'll be 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock.
How many hoses?
Five. Thanks. Think we're good?
Anything else you need? Is it all squared away?
I think that works. Filing fee, you have to submit a filing fee at the time of the, any person submitting a preliminary plan. Accompanied by a fee calculated in accordance with the fee schedule and effective the time of the application. You got that sheet? That's the one I've got. I assume, I assume that's up to date. Did I write a date on there? I wrote 17 or something, so we haven't changed it since then, I don't think.
$50 filing fee. $50, $1,500, $100 for each check. Calculate that.
But that gives us the bucks to hire Scott and all that stuff, so, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna write that down. I don't want that back.
Or you photocopy it, not calculate it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You're into these modern things, huh?
It's helped so much now.
It does.
Addicted to it. I nearly have a million pictures on my phone.
So on the 22nd, the, the plan and the check will look, it will be accompanied by the application, the check and a plan.
That's good.
Because then you, the plan will get held up.
Who's the engineer?
Ducharme and Ellis.
Now...
So he has Scott's email, so you can just, just tell him the email. Early and Wood know, let Scott know. That it's coming.
Electronic stuff.
It also says, "The, the plan should not be deemed to have been submitted unless it has been delivered to the planning board and the Board of Health at a scheduled meeting of each or has been delivered to the planning board and the Board of Health, care of the town clerk." So you just need to earmark one copy for the Board of Health when we'll, she'll be, you'll be here. Oh, good, so we just...
I could get it to them as well.
Gotta go to their meeting. How many acres?
I guess around 13 or 14 or something. I haven't reviewed it in a while and it's not complete, so it was scheduled, it was gonna be complete for the 22nd regardless, so...
Those ones down by your house?
Yeah.
Two dogs have been gotten. Two dogs have been.
Really?
Yep.
Small ones?
All right, so 22nd, fee, application and plans, send a copy to, from Ducharme to Scott and earmark a copy for the Board of Health. You guys take care of the newspaper and once I get the...
And I'll email you that.
Email the, the notification, then I'll do the mailing. Now, the mailing takes place, is that within the two-week period or after, before the two-week period? Before the, before the notice?
I mean, you might as well do it before.
Yeah, as soon as I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I'll have to have it to the newspaper, the Wednesday before, well, Tuesday before Friday, so they're like the 5th or something.
Tuesday before Friday, that's two weeks before.
But I'll, we'll get a T after our next meeting.
Will you do the telegram?
No, I do the item.
Oh, the item, okay.
Because it satisfies the requirement.
Right, it's only two choices, right? I just do the telegram because we have an account there.
You should get a count with the item, they're cheaper.
I'll have to work on that. All righty, thank you.
All right.
Okay, next thing on, John? We got an A and R on Lancaster Road. Somebody know anything about A and R and Lancaster Road? I guess you mentioned it.
So this plan here, as we talked last time, this was the parcel piece that got traded. So this piece back here goes to Mountainside, so you have access to the, the back property and then the note about the 4,000 square feet back here that will always remain with us, so that's all.
How's that note read? Let's see.
May we participate?
Oh, we've got more than one copy, don't we?
Oh, more than...
There's six copies.
What's parcel C?
So that, yeah, that was the trade. So, so this, so this part, because it was right at 80,000.
Back up to 80,000.
Exactly.
I thought it was the front for some reason.
Nope, it has, just, it was cleaner to take that off and then we'd stay back from the setback on the, on the septic and side yard. So, little odd shape, but...
Not really, just a little, it looks like a stabilizing.
A gusset.
Yeah, well, no, you know.
A wind brace?
A brace. A chair wall.
So a new driveway location's gonna come off of Lancaster Road?
It can, yeah. I have no problem with that. I mean, just...
Well, I don't have a preference. Well, the only problem we have is if you access off of that current driveway that goes around back, you're accessing it off another piece of property.
Yeah.
So, and also your house already has an address.
Right.
So if you ended up...
We'll keep, we'll keep it.
Right, so you'll end up coming off almost like where it says mountain, right, straight off of here.
Right in here, yeah.
Right.
You can see where they've kind of been driving in and outside.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
The way the address can stay the same and you don't have to flip it back and forth and...
Right.
So, yeah, we'll put the, we'll put the driveway in there.
If we get much more rain, it could be the mudway. It already is. Although it's starting to freeze up.
I want your pipe to your peaching field.
It's freezing out there.
What's that? Allows the pipe to peaching fields.
Oh, it comes here, I mean, gravity here and then it's a pump system from here. Yeah, it's a pump up there.
Is it documented there?
Pardon?
Your documents are...
Oh, there.
We gotta cover it both ways. You gotta cover that if this is sold back here, that 4,000 square feet will remain with this. But if this lot is sold, it has to be sold with the 4,000 feet. Do we get that? Do we get that covered?
What?
That, that note for, I don't know if that's a note for, in the last note.
I think it says that 4,000 feet always remain with this. That's the way it was in...
No matter which one is sold.
No matter which way it goes.
Yeah. But that needs to be in the deed for...
It will get recorded along with...
It will get recorded because this, this is gonna have to change to Spring Hill really. That deed will have to change because of the, the different boundaries now. So that'll be changed still and recorded.
I move that we approve a plan dated 1/7/19 for Mountainside Corporation on Lancaster Road, drawn by David Ross Associates.
It's down the bottom. Town of Brolin Book 2291-104. Write down, followed over by the title bar, right in the middle.
Oh, right over there.
Right in the middle.
Yeah, good, as you've said.
Did you add a second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
With the...
I'm out of spade here.
With the transfer of parcel D to Mountainside and parcel C to Spring Hill and the stipulation, and I think you just should write in, in the notes that parcel C is not a building lot but is to be conveyed to and, oh, no, in the event that the, yeah, that final comment. In the event that the remaining land of Mountainside Corporation is conveyed or further subdivided, at least 4,000 square feet will remain with parcel A. One for total lot area in excess of 80,000 square feet. Approval under the subdivision control are not required. I think that's all we need. Good.
Okay, hold on.
I got it all.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Hearing no last for vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Hearing no no's is unanimous.
Sorry, man.
That has to be signed.
Yeah. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta get a...
We all gonna sign this?
Yeah, it was, I didn't, I don't, we couldn't get an amount.
Oh, do you have a check?
I do, I can go up in the car and get it.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good. And it's gonna be, I think...
I can get it while you guys decide, okay?
You just had that out, didn't you?
Seventy-five sounds good.
I think seventy-five.
I mean, that's all we're doing.
I'll make it sign. You, Mylar, I think you're...
That was good, mine.
Mr. Vigley, I'm here. Does that, does he get the construction restarted? Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, because that's when the registry deeds looks at signatures, they can make sure that they can verify.
We'll have to explain under some ideas.
They want to make sure it's legit. They don't want to think like that.
That's right. We have to be careful with this thing. Did you ever sign this?
Seventy-five.
Okay.
Do you want the outside stuff done before that?
Yeah, we'll get all the drainage in. It's gonna lock right up by once, there is, the mowers will be okay. Yeah, it's gonna be cold. Drilling welders here, Freddy.
Oh, that's good luck.
Produces eight million gallons of water.
Yeah?
Therefore, we, yeah, we, say we have.
Do you keep one copy and the Mylar?
And then we'll...
No, you keep the Mylar. We'll give you the Mylar back.
Okay, you're keeping, you're keeping two.
You keep all the blanks.
Where is, where is this first thing we have?
Do we need a copy of this still signed or it doesn't?
Usually you don't.
No. You guys can have that. We have the Mylar on our copies. We'll get that recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It wasn't too painful.
No, it wasn't painful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
The signal could have been painful, but...
No. Thanks.
Okay, this is, by the way, next thing is to... Okay, this is, by the way, next thing is the economical housing subdivision. This is my latest addition on it. Which I put a little more explanation on to begin with.
Let's just go back to an illustrious clock.
Now, what is this?
Economical housing by law, proposed by law. The purpose of it is.
So, but can I just add, what else have we got for tonight?
We've got to, we've got to straighten out what we're going to do with housing or affordable housing, a conflict in our bylaw.
Right, and what else?
I think that's it. What else has happened?
I'm noticing people in the audience and trying to make sure that.
We get to that.
I'm two weeks from now.
Yeah, he's just in here.
He's just here to play.
I'm just in your affordable housing discussion.
Right.
I don't know, he, he doesn't sound like Jack saw this. Jack gave me a call and said he was going to be here and you, and you did some magic trick.
Yeah, well, I didn't come up from Falmouth and.
Are you here for a particular item?
I'm here for the affordable housing.
Okay. Right, okay. The first purpose is the, the empty nesters.
Can you say a limited number here?
Limited number, yes.
What's, what's the number?
You want to know a limited number? It's limited by the fact that you cannot have twenty, well, we go down.
No, no. What limits the number of those that we can build?
Right here, a limited number, can't just, you can't build two subdivisions within 5,000 feet of each other. That limits it right there. You can't have many, more than 24 lots in a subdivision.
So you could have 120,000?
I don't think I may, we're at 5,000 feet apart, the 24. How'd you get, how'd you get the 5,000? Is there something there you, you got that I missed?
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'll give you my thoughts on it as we go by in each, each section. Reducing it from two acres to one acre lots. And from 200 feet to 100 feet. Frontage. And that we don't have, to limit them, we look in the lots, no more than 24 nor less than five building lots in a subdivision.
So if you had.
What's it?
So if you could fit five of them in town, you could get 120 houses.
How did you get that? If you could fit five of them in town.
No more than 24.
No more than 24 in, in each subdivision?
Right.
Right, okay.
So if you could fit five of them in town.
Oh, if you could fit five of them, yeah, okay.
You have 120 houses.
You would have 120, yes. And I have no more than two lots, may have frontage, I already established public weight. I'm not, I don't look for somebody who has land or more on the front. And I said, honest to, instead of putting five 200-foot lots, I could put 10 100-foot ones. Wouldn't have it too concentrated. And to keep it economical, keeping it down to 1,200 square feet per house.
That's more than I've got.
That's more than you got?
Yeah.
Okay, then you don't have to worry about economics here.
No, but I mean.
You think it's, you think that's a bad number? You think it should be less?
I think it should be less.
I originally thought 1,000 square feet.
Yeah.
What do you think a lot would be worth? Um. Current building lots, 200K, roughly. It wouldn't be half of that.
I guess the problem is how do you get.
And then you have a same issue well on septic.
Well on a septic.
Right, what the current setbacks say.
Have you talked about it, Al?
Yeah. They said no problem, they were.
Yeah, they'll just, they'll just fit with Title V.
Right.
If you have perfect land.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you have a nice bottom of gravel pit or something, or gravel hayfield, you can do it. If you get any wetlands or.
That goes with any, any building lot.
Yes, it does. It does.
Yeah, but you get, you get a lot more flexibility on a.
On a.
Sure. Two acre.
What's the, what's the size of the lot?
The minimum is.
One acre.
One acre.
One acre.
Yeah. So with a well on the septic, you should be fine.
Yeah, they, they could do it.
Put a well in the back, septic floor, you have to have one in the backyard, one in the front yard. Should be good.
Well.
Well, it depends on your side to side.
In an ideal lot, in an ideal lot. And then, and if you throw wetlands in there, that.
And it depends, it depends on how close you are to the house next to you, too.
Well, then it can't be done. I mean, this just allows somebody to do it on an ideal lot or a lot that will take it. If it can't take it, then they can't do it, and we haven't lost anything.
We could put them all down on the gravel pit.
So where? Where will, how much? Where the easy building lot, so they're going to be more than challenging one. Right?
Yeah.
So where are we steering these?
So.
As a result of having to be on the best, best land.
Let's throw 400 half, okay, so now we drop a well.
What do you say?
Ten acres. So now you're up to a buck sixty.
And the septic is.
Are they kind of the same to any well?
I don't know.
I think in a private discussion.
Calculating how much a lot would be worth.
So you're two.
Not a hand-built house yet.
Yeah, but I think you're closer to two.
Now, 200 dollars a square foot for a cheap house?
To what?
It's around.
200,000 for the, for the lot.
350.
You could build a house that's 50 square feet.
Yeah, so you're at, you're, you're $450,000 and you haven't made a dime yet.
And now you're condensed.
And now we've increased the density.
Yeah.
And we've steered people toward the most perccable land, which is probably the most agricultural.
So I, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to belittle, I'm just trying to be practical. Is it viable?
Well, what's, what's your, what's your goal in terms of dollars? What, what are you trying to target?
No, I'm just trying to, whatever is.
And we have a discussion with all of us.
Yes, sorry. Whatever is, if everybody's using two acres in large houses, people in, in town, some of these empty nesters can't afford it, or they can't afford what they have and they don't want to move to something big like that. It gives them a smaller piece of property, a smaller house that they can afford.
But the, the two acre lot was because of sewage and water.
That was a growth.
Yeah?
It was a planet, growth planning tool to.
But what's your target in terms of the, the value that something needs to sell at to be reasonable?
Yeah. I was thinking, I was thinking off the top, I had 400,000, but I'm just trying to give something that's less than what we, what, that can be built now on a new house.
On my project, I kicked this around, and that's why I did the duplexes. Because I could have more space between them. If I did individual units, I was going to have little boxes all very close together. By putting two together, or even three, now I had some space between them. So I wonder if you had the two acre lot but could build a four-unit structure on it. Would that accomplish what you're trying to do? Which would be the size of a big house.
Well, well.
Yeah, five or six thousand.
What do you, what do you think it has to be a shared one?
What do you say?
If you, if you put four units on a single lot, within a single well, now you have a, what triggers a public water supply at that point?
Public water supply is, it's 25 people, more than 60 days out of the year, so that would. If you had a bedroom count, say two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, so you have eight people, 16 people, so you're still under the threshold.
So you're fine.
I'm, I'm looking. Maybe, maybe it cannot economically be accomplished, but are there any, any downsides? Are we letting the cat out of the bag with this type of bylaw? This is what I'm interested in here. Will we cause harm?
To whom?
To the town? If we, if we had a bylaw like this. I, I don't see it harm. I can see, maybe it might not, may not be economically feasible to, to do something like this.
But it seems like the most economical projects that have been going on in town.
Is what?
The, the most economical building projects that have been going on, which are viable by definition, right? Have got shared, they've got a chunk of land where some of it is left open and some of it is more dense, like you're talking about, but they've got shared well and shared septics, which knocks a lot of cost off. And shared, you know, shared roadway, which is expensive. It seems like.
What was that last one?
Shared roadway, I mean, you got, you know, they built, they're subdivisions, right? So you don't have to put in a million driveways. But wouldn't it make more sense to put in, to encourage that, I guess, in certain places?
It's like a cluster zone.
Yeah, or a little. Subdivision's targeted for smaller.
Don't get into cluster zone.
You know, the first paragraph here bothers me because if you're trying to do it for older residents.
Well, there's no reason that anybody else can do it, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, you're saying they can no longer afford the upkeep. If they're downsizing, they're, they probably don't want the burden of taking care of a big place either.
That's why it's only one acre.
So why don't we have them go into the apartments?
You've got people who lived in a house to go into apartments. There's some people that would not want to go into apartments. People would not want to go into a condo. They would not, would not want to live in Chris Lake's place. See, they want, they want their own land.
What do you live in?
I don't, I have no problem with, but there's a lot of people, a lot of people don't like it. They like their own land, they want to go out and plant their garden, and they want to, whatever they have, put barbecue out and a fire pit and whatever else they want to do.
But what about a compromise? Because we, we talked about this once before about allowing duplexes, because we have no real provision for encouragement for duplexes in town.
We can do that another time, too, but we're getting down to town, I might foresee something get through, get this one through, unless there's, unless there's a, a problem, when I say that we're going to, going to cause a problem. I don't see we're going to cause a problem. We may have to amend it, we find that it doesn't really work, and we have to do duplexes or something else, or change the dimensions, because it's not economical. But, and I, I think, was that lady that was here with Carolyn last time? When we talked about the conservation? And she thought, we just kind of touched on it.
What's her name? She lives in the co-housing.
I don't know who she is.
Was it the dyke area?
Liz, yeah, Liz. There's another model that seems to work that I think is really cool, is the, the co-housing units. They set aside 80 acres of broken space. They've got nicely designed, attached, but individual units and shared garden plots.
A lot of shared services.
But Ryan, think about the people that live where you do.
Processing plant right on the property, big well.
The people that live in the units where you do, most of them have come from living in separate houses.
Sure.
So why do you think you have to set up this kind of a model?
I can't say who I heard it from, but I heard like to stay in, in Berlin, but I can't, you know, the taxes and the big house, I can't afford anymore. And there's no place else to go.
But that's a defeatist attitude. I mean, every one of these places that gets built, gets filled up. And it's mostly people that don't want to maintain, they want to travel, they want the time moves.
And there's some people.
How many, do you feel like doing yard work at your age? I mean, you're advanced age.
I'm not advanced age, I don't want to do it.
He's only a couple of months older than I am.
Well, she reminds me of that couple of months old.
But I mean, that's the thing that most people don't want. When they're getting near the end of their life, you know.
This may not work. You're right, maybe this really wouldn't work, there's not enough people to take advantage of this. And a builder goes out and does a survey and finds that there's not enough people want this that, that I would worth building something like this. So, it's something that's not being used.
How much are your units going for?
Well, I don't know. The target is around four, maybe a little bit more. Of course, I started this in 2006, and it was a different set of numbers.
Right. But see, what I'm thinking is, most people that, that probably, by the time you can get buying the land, build a single unit, is probably going to cost more than going into a unit like that.
It may very well be. As I say, it may not be economically viable. But I'm looking, what kind of problems would be caused by having this in our bylaw? And maybe there's something else that could be done that's, that's better. Duplexes like Jay brings out, but this, this is not, doesn't say you can never have duplexes or you can never change it, it's.
But see, I think you're trying to make a provision here for, for people so that they can stay in, in Berlin. But I think like with his unit going in, there are places that people can stay in Berlin.
Yeah, sure.
Once they bump their husbands off, you know.
Yeah, but the other way you could look at it, too, is a starter home for a young couple.
Right.
Uh, no.
No, but I mean.
It wouldn't work.
I, I can think, I'm looking at, I've also heard people say, I would like, my children would like to stay in Berlin, but they can't afford any of the houses around here.
So go someplace else.
That's the problem. This, this, this could be.
We're on TV.
But it's not a starter home because you can't add to it. If you're, if you're, if you're, if you're a young couple, you don't have any children, only one child, you know, or you want a, a first home until you.
Right.
This would be a first.
But at least move from there.
Yeah, it give you, give a chance for a first home.
Right.
But no, not, not a starter, a starter home or something like, you start with a small one.
I used the wrong term, I should have said.
First home, first home. Good first home.
No, I think, most people that buy a small home and their family grows, they move to another home. They don't add on to the one they had.
Okay, so this would be ideal for it.
Yeah.
I mean, look at Lefkew and nothing.
Some do it something.
There's a ton of houses that started small and they were just added on and people stayed.
Oh, yeah?
That's a New England way, when you look at houses. I mean, it's been going on forever.
Same thing.
You know, you add out here and you add on there.
Second story.
Second story.
Yeah, you take a ranch, make it a duplex. I mean, a garrison colonial.
Right. We've had a lot of those.
I think if we're going to devote attention to writing something that's going to accomplish our objective, I, I guess I'd rather look at duplexes. And trying to find a, like my pro.
I'm, I'm looking, my objective is for people who have owned their own house, they can still own their own house.
Well, you can do that with a duplex.
Plus with a duplex, they may get a little pin money if they rent out the other side.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking, well, that's something we could do, too, also, in addition to this. But we don't have to cut this out because we want to do duplexes.
This one, the, the one, one objective I have, one problem I have with this is that it, it's going to force us to look at the most likely land that's good for agriculture as the greatest potential for accommodating economically this type of development. It's, it's going to be land that perks well, that is, you know, it's going to be open, it's going to be, you know, it's like POTUS's piece would have been ideal for a project like this. And I still have that, one of those objectives of trying to steer us away from targeting that kind of land for the most intense development. If, if I look at North Bros' model for duplexes and you just, you see one here on a lot and one here on a lot. It's not a, it's not an intense development that, you know, really hits one part of the community hard. It's a naturally occurring. It's a naturally occurring use of existing lots. It makes them more viable in terms of math, because you're getting two units on one septic and one well. So, it, it always seems like, when you guys just did the math and when Mark was here before, the problem is that infrastructure cost can't be escaped, no matter what size the unit is, so that you can't get away from, from the well, the septic and the cost of the land and, you know.
If you're thinking of losing up too much agriculture, and I got no more than twenty-four in, in a subdivision.
That's huge.
And they got to be five thousand feet away from any other one, that's a mile away.
I mean, the house I live in is, is just over twelve hundred square feet.
And so you're thinking.
And mine's nine hundred.
You know, so I'm, I'm thinking, that's a duplex.
Okay, so I can, I can reduce that to a thousand square feet.
And it is a duplex, you know, so I.
And we can, we can reduce the size of the subdivision. I say no more.
Why, why, can I ask why you're so stuck on, on this model?
What's that?
Why are you so stuck on this model and not willing to bend a little?
Oh, the reason I'm stuck on this model, I, I think, I, I've got that there's a lot of people who've always lived in a single house.
Yeah, but you know, people have to learn to change, all of us do.
I'm giving them alternative.
My cousin, my cousin just sold her house in Northbro. She's far much younger than I am.
Oh, she's younger than me too.
Yeah, she is, a lot of people are. They just bulldozed her house the other day, beautiful old house. And they're going to build two houses on that land instead of. And she bought a unit over at the Willows. I'd rather live in a tent.
Well, you have to learn to live, you know, I should say.
But I, what I'm saying, you, people have to change as they get older, whether they go into a retirement home or go into a duplex, you, you have to make adjustments, you know? My cousin's wife just died, I invited him to come live with us in our little tiny house, you know?
We're going to talk to a couple builders and find out whether they found this.
They will get, or builders here?
Usable. You guys builders?
Builders and engineers.
No, I'm just a sort of dirt dummy that ended up with a piece of land and trying to get my investment out of it. Which is another subject, I doubt, I'm going to live long enough to build that out. We'll try to find something that builds it well.
But see, the way he describes it, that it, building it two in, you've got more land around it. If you do a duplex, you've got more land around it, and then.
And we can do a duplex, we could have another bylaw for duplexes.
Did you look at a, a model?
But if this isn't reasonable to.
And then what's going to happen?
No, I kind of dismissed it.
Nobody will build it, nobody will.
Well, we're going to, we're going to go further on down the line and we still don't have anything in place. My thinking is, most people, you know, where my brother lives outside of Philly, duplexes are the, they're ugly as sin. But duplexes have been built for years. They have different sidings on both sides, you know, they just, but everybody uses their yard for gardening, swings out, whatever they want to do, they own that piece of property.
And you got people that want to get one wall.
And I don't know why a duplex wouldn't work the same here.
Oh, it would, no, I don't, I don't, I don't mind is, you know, having a separate bylaw, it's just the thing that, that if we're going to spend the time and the energy trying to bring something that's going to pass on town floor, let's make it workable, I mean.
Right.
I mean, I just, I, the numbers here for the constraints that this has, I, I don't see where anybody would ever use it, you know, and I, and I don't mind spending the energy on creating a bylaw.
Right.
But.
You don't, you don't want to go to town meeting though with something that isn't going to fly.
Exactly.
And then.
And say, well, we can come back and do another one later on, because that's not going to work.
Yeah, well, that's why it might be worth asking a few builders to take a look at this and see whether they.
No, they, they got another act of the grind.
Well, I think Mark gave us good advice when he came in that time and talked about bake's costs, like you guys were talking, that you can't escape, that if you realize what those costs are and you look at, you know, the, the desirable, buildable land and what that's going to cost you, suddenly you're in an inescapable dilemma in terms of trying to keep that cost down under, if your goal is under four hundred thousand, you know? I mean, if, if they're in town already and they're selling an older home, which they've lived in forever, that needs a lot of work, what are they getting forward to begin with? We're not talking about people that are living in newer housing that, that's in the five to six range. We're talking about people that are probably already in the four hundred to four fifty thousand range. You know, right, so they're unloading that to go into another piece that's not going to save them any in terms of taxes. Where, where are their savings?
What's the benefit? What's the benefit of it?
Well, using that, that they're going to go, the house is the same value, but it's a smaller house, the same value, then, then a tax, well, a smaller house is easy to take care of. Why do they need a big house if they don't have, all their kids are gone?
Well, same value means the taxes are going to be the same, right?
Huh?
Same value means the taxes are going to be the same.
I mean, if you look at our older housing stock, where a lot of these folks live, that, that you're talking about, you know, they're not, they're not escaping into something that's necessarily, well, maintenance costs ought to be less and utility costs ought to be less as a result of being more energy efficient and stuff like that, so.
If they're built right.
But I, I agree, let's, you know, pull some guys in and say, let's talk.
If, if we set up an area like that, I mean, is, is a developer going to buy a bunch of lots and try to build? Because the other way you get housing costs down is that you build a bunch of houses at the same time to the same essential design, that makes a huge difference. And so if a developer needs to do that, and then would they end up with this plan with the over five units, you have to start putting affordable units in.
More to it.
Because that's, that's a big cost too, because the affordable one ends up being, losing a fair amount of money, right? The kind of numbers I've been seeing.
Right.
So that drives the cost of the rest of the money.
Yeah.
But you got the, septic's twenty to forty thousand dollars, right? Maybe not even twenty, I don't know if you can do it for twenty.
Yeah, I think they're thirty to fifty, most of them.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of gravel in town, but even.
Well, we're talking on idea a lot, that's why I had said pick thirty, which is right in the middle of the twenty and the four range.
Yeah, and ten for the well.
Ten for the well.
And then if you're, you get the affordables over six, and then when do you, when do you have to put sprinklers in, six units?
Three or more.
Three or more, so now you got to put cisterns and sprinklers and all that. One question that I was talking to Joe about today is, why don't we have town water and sewer anywhere?
Wait a minute, whoa, now, now we got a three-meeting discussion on that one, so he, cut that one.
But that would take a fifty thousand dollar investment per house down to fifteen.
Is he going to get calls?
Well, he's on tape now, sitting there, right?
I mean, we've got, on all sides around us, we've got town water and sewer, I think. North Borough has it, Clinton has it.
And you know why Berlin is so, so much prettier than those places? Because we don't have water and sewer.
They're not going to have town water and sewers in, it's these economical housing subdivisions, so.
Well, maybe we should think about that. Pick an area like the center of town, put that in.
Do we, do we have to have town water and sewer?
There is a center of town again.
For this thing to be passed.
Well, it takes a fifty thousand dollar cost that gets marked up and to the end user and knocks it down to about fifteen. That's a big difference, right? The numbers you're talking about.
Well, we kicked this around in Bolton, and the problem was, in the center of town, the original infrastructure was going to be so expensive, the houses in the center of town couldn't afford to carry it and build a darn thing. So can you get the whole town to build this when it's only going to serve?
Right.
The center of town? And everybody on the outer perimeter is saying, I just spent thirty thousand dollars for my own sewer system and now you want me to come up with a lot of money?
In most towns, they, they charge you, even if you don't run it to your house. They charge you the length of the pipe.
Yeah. We looked at it and decided we'd really work at trying to upgrade all the sewer systems that are a little iffy in the center of town, because I couldn't.
Oh, so there isn't, there is none in the center?
No. No, and I couldn't see how we could finance it, how we could ever make it work.
I wonder how, how it gets through in other towns.
It's always been there.
Yeah.
And I think, like Sterling's got it, and I think, they've got water, I don't know if they've got sewer, but I think a lot of it may go back to the thirties. And good old WPA, along with Electrifying America, getting grants for this state and federal government. The last one I have any knowledge of was right around Lake Winnipesaukee. They did a big infrastructure system through Marineth and Laconia and the rest to protect the lake. And that was a big government grant. They put it in and everybody had to tie into it and kick in some money and yada, yada, but it. And people were able to borrow the money on, you know, very low interest for a ten-year payout, so it didn't kill them. But that one had to have a lot of federal help to put it together.
Now, there are communities within our region that, because of their economic status, qualify for community development block grant money, and frequently, it's used for infrastructure improvements like sewer and water. But usually to upgrade existing systems, although sometimes they've been extending them into new territory that needs that demand, but East Brookfield and Warren and, you know, a lot of those towns on the other side of the county that, because of their economic status, qualify, they, they tend to be able to apply for that money and pull it in. But we're not, we, we, we tend to score a little higher on the rating system, so the likelihood that we pull in the money is pretty limited, so, yeah.
Yeah, Bolton, I imagine you said of following Bolton, and we have no score at all for trying to get grants. We have very small minority population, no industry, expensive, you know, you divide the value of the real estate. Well, back in the eighties, when I was a selectman, I think you were running Berlin on about half the real estate value that we were running Bolton. And I wondered, I always wondered how you, how you did it, because we were always whining, we didn't have any money. You know, you got twice the real estate based tax.
But it's residential.
Well, that was back then though, before.
Back, back, back then.
Yeah, it was all residential.
And then since then, we've had the non-residential.
You don't have much of anything else there now, do you?
No, no, we don't, and nothing, what we do have, the General Radio Building, is only partially occupied, building was put up by microwave technologies, that's been empty for about three years. So we're sitting over there trying to support everything on residential.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're, we're off the subject, we got into water and sewer supplies and other towns.
Yeah, but he's explaining with the tax, we don't.
Yeah. I'd like, like, to hear the negatives to this and change where the negatives are. Do we have to, do we have to have it economically viable? Do we have to have, that a builder would come in and do this? What do we have to change?
Why don't we, why don't we look at writing a second one for duplexes? You know, because I think that's going to accomplish what you're trying to do here and, and, and doesn't put so many burdens on the people trying to do it.
Well, we can do this one.
We could certainly, like, these guys are saying, pull somebody in and build.
I'd like to hear that, whether it's.
Yeah.
And we can grab Northbro's text for duplexes and, and put that in front of somebody from the building trades at the same time and just say, talk to us about the merits of these proposals, because I think on a thumbnail, they could probably come up with some pretty quick figures as to.
It'd be good to get a, like, a ranking of the costs for houses of this size, so land, land cost is part of it, which is addressed here, but then you've got, you know, say that, say the septic and well are a big hit, maybe included in this, you, you allow some amount of sharing of infrastructure. And then if the affordable housing requirement hurts it a lot, maybe you leave that, you know, for, for an area like this.
You know, I really think that when you're talking about, they don't want to go into an apartment and stuff, I think a duplex is, is a really good answer, because they get to use the land, they can have a garden, you know, they can feed the birds.
Would they like a duplex over a single house on their own land? Would they rather live on land?
Well, when it comes to cost.
Well, now, you, you, you say that that's going to cost less, okay, maybe so.
I think it will.
I know, I just finished a, a subdivision in Boylston, and they started off, the, the first phase of it was single family, and the price ranges, when the economy was going up, started in the mid-fives and they went up to the sixes and even some of them, they built bigger with in-laws and they were up close to seven. These are single families on somewhere between three-quarter of an acre to an acre. And then the second phase of the project, they turned them into over fifty-five duplexes. And the price ranges on the square footages of those were smaller in the range of twelve, fifteen hundred square feet. And they were, they're selling in the, you know, starting off at say four-thirty and, you know, with extras maybe up into the mid-upper, mid-upper fours tops. But they were definitely, sold them like hotcakes.
So, now, did you have water and sewer, or did you have to supply it?
They had, they brought town water in.
Okay.
For the project, but had septic systems.
Septic systems.
But it was, it was a.
Which makes it easier to.
It was an old sand bed.
Make, but also makes it easier to put multiple units on smaller acreage, I mean, right?
It does, it, it makes it, if you have water and, and then have septics, town water and septics, it makes it much easier. But you can, like I said, you could have a shared well.
Right.
For a handful of units and then have another shared well for another handful of units. So, the economics of it, they were, single families, you know, averaging in the sixes versus over fifty-five duplexes that were in the, in the mid-fours.
So, did the number of units, you know, double because it was a duplex, so that they worked about the same?
It did.
So that's not the number.
So they were putting the duplexes on the same sized lots as they were the singles.
Right, great, great. That's how the numbers work.
How big were the single families, how many square feet and bedrooms?
They were mostly four bedrooms.
Wow.
And probably twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Oh, yeah, so a lot bigger than what?
So, two buildings are about the same size.
Yeah, yeah. And they had first-floor masters, they, they were more, they, they were first-floor, one-floor living.
Yeah.
Aging in place.
Aging in place.
Brooklyn. Most of, some of the setups with the downstairs bedrooms.
So the duplexes were the same footprint, they just have.
Approximately, what, what they had done to keep aesthetically, it, it probably wasn't for everybody, but what they did was they had a common, like, overhang. So it was like almost two, it was like two individual structures, but the common wall was a, a roof that stretched from one to the other, so it was considered one structure.
Didn't touch.
But they didn't have a common wall, they had a common roof that, that was almost like a little, I don't even know what you would call it, but it was wood that spanned from one to the other. So it was technically one structure, but it was two separate foundations.
Really?
Two outside walls. And that was to give it the feel of having your own house, having the separation. You, you didn't have a common wall with your neighbor.
So, did, did Boylston put in a duplex?
In that one?
Bylaw?
In that one zoning district, which is closer to two ninety off of one forty.
Right.
You can do duplexes. And I forget what the, I forget what classification, it's a residential zoning district, but they do have, you can do multi- And I forget what the, I forget what classification, it's a residential zoning district, but they do have, you can do multifamily in that one zone.
Okay.
And the septic, so were the, was it a duplex per septic or was there a septic system?
We ended up, this was a very unique project. We ended up having one common system for all of the, all of the multifamilies.
Yeah.
We put them into one system.
So how many units was that?
Oh, boy. There had to be 20 some odd lots, so probably maybe 30 to 40 units.
But you're, oh, okay, because I was wondering, you must have stayed under the 10,000 gallon a day. So that was the target still?
That's what we were driving.
Yeah, okay.
Staying under the 10,000 gallons a day for once.
But they really maxed that out in terms of bedrooms in that part of the project? They utilized.
All two bedrooms.
But they, but they used as many bedrooms probably as they could accommodate with the 10,000 gallons?
We were close, we were close. But because what they did was took a single family residential subdivision.
Yeah.
And then said, to give it a lower price point, went to the duplexes and the developer wanted to do over 55.
So it got driven by the developer because he was concerned he wasn't going to be able to sell the rest of his units? And that he went back to the town and asked for some changes?
He wanted to do an over 55.
But initially, he came in and wanted to do single.
He bought the subdivision.
Okay.
He bought the subdivision with the permits.
Yeah.
And it was going single family, single family, single family, single family. And he said, I want to do it as an over 55. So he was able to do duplexes. So he did the duplexes and then it was very unique. Then he condo-ized that section of the project and made it an over 55 with a common system. So he kind of backed into it. But the idea, the ultimate idea was to do an over 55, keep a lower price point. I think he did better than he would have if he had done single family houses in the long term and it was more affordable. So I think he won, I think the town won because they were concerned about, you know, a lot of school kids. You know, and ultimately, I think the value of the land was more too, so they got better taxes out of it.
Okay, I think we got to get on with the agenda.
With the agenda.
Well, agenda is affordable housing and senior residential development.
John, Brian here. I'm Steve Venakas' engineer.
How do you spell that engineer? That whole joke six months ago, I didn't know how to spell engineer and now I hire one.
I'm from a developer.
I think so.
Talking to us about River Road.
Correct, yeah, correct.
What table is?
Well, I think getting somebody in. I mean, we can, we can ask a couple guys in town that do septic systems what they think the average, I mean, we've got an idea. But we can have them pin it down to the minute here.
On the difference between?
You know, what they.
Double and single?
Well, no, I mean, just tell us what systems are going to cost if you put it on land that's fairly, I mean, how substantial is there a difference between that? Land that's rugged and difficult as opposed to land that might be easier to work?
I'm going to be able to tell you firsthand in the next week or two.
Yeah, there you go.
Outside a gravel pit, I was looking at. There's places where there's stuff where the ground doesn't drain for the entire year in this town.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
North side of the hill or south side of the hill.
Yeah.
And then you got to go up and create these little mountains.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looking back to the old days of the stone pits.
We'll figure out how we're going to do that at another meeting.
Well, don't give up, Ron.
What's that?
Don't give up.
No, I think we should talk about when we're going to discuss it again and get some people in here to talk about it.
Yeah. We could want a field trip and go see the one in Boylston.
A field trip?
It's the cheapest new construction, single families rent. Seems like there's nothing at the 475.
Imagine it would be.
And development Marcus doing on the other side of 495, what size lots? Are those two acre lots?
No, 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 that's a 40 be.
Yeah, so he's on half acre lots.
Yeah.
Half acre lots and they're still 475.
Yeah.
But they're bigger than 1200 square feet.
Oh, yeah.
Lost it again.
Yeah.
I had my own copy of zoning bylaws here.
Oh, I stole it.
Oh, no wonder why I can't find it. I'm going crazy, I'm losing my mind.
How many square feet you allowed to build?
Right.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Are you going to ask about the language? Karen Sotomayor, is that her Latin name? The person, who did your plant house?
Karen.
Yeah.
Sonnenberg.
Sonnenberg.
Yeah.
Can she do a technical letter? Because now we need to provide a technical letter to DHCD for, I believe, Berlin Woods. We have to convince them why we need a Berlin preference.
We need to convince the state?
Why we need what?
A Berlin preference.
I don't understand it at all.
The state is not asking Berlin Woods to include language that requires them to prefer Berlin residents in the lottery process. And so we want Karen to write us a letter that says.
A technical letter.
That's a specific type of.
Well, last time I wrote a letter, you know, we need it, we offer preference if you work in Berlin. We have the malls, we have the regional schools, and it was not technical enough.
So do you know what a technical letter looks like?
No, but chances are she's in the housing business.
Oh, is that what you were saying? I couldn't gather what, you know, because.
So, I mean, I'm happy to write to her if you.
Well, I felt before I could do anything or, you know, you had to get the planning board.
Or you can, she can write to her. I'm, you know, do we just tell Eloise to go ahead and write to her and get the letter she needs?
I don't see any reason.
And if she charges, we'll pay for it.
We'll pay for it.
I move that we pay for whatever Karen Sonnenberg would charge the town to write a technical letter on behalf of the housing partnership to.
We get that as a consultant. We got, we got as consultant.
THCD.
I second that.
Is that acceptable to?
Sure.
Would that work?
Tim, you want to talk to Karen?
Not necessarily. I mean, I'm happy to, but you can explain what, in an email, what needs to be done better than I can.
Well, I think she knows all the terms.
Yes. I'm glad she does because I didn't and I got your emails.
I know.
A technical letter, what are we talking about? Okay, any discussion on this? More? All in favor of letting Eloise write to Karen to get a technical letter?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Then we'll pick up the tab if it's charged.
Yeah, as a consultant.
Do you want me to move that we pay $38.48 to the Gate House New England for?
Nah, we did that already.
For a hearing notice? You've.
We got the old one, I just put the information.
So you're happy with it?
It's the same one.
Yeah, okay.
Can you oppose that we accept the minutes from last time?
I move that we accept the minutes from our last meeting on.
Is anyone on the scene?
January, no, it was December.
No, it was December 18th.
He pretends he's writing over here, but he's doing crossword puzzle, I can see it.
Sudoku. Taste my mind shot.
May I just second that?
Yeah.
Did you second it? Okay.
I move that we.
You got to move.
Did you vote on that one?
No, no. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
I move that we do whatever's necessary to expedite the Economic Development Committee to access the funding that's available to them rather than having to go through the planning board to get bills paid. They evidently have to get our approval for everything that they.
Because there is some committee.
Right, and I just, I mean, it's a pain in the neck for them, they've got $500 earmarked for them. Can we just say that we request the, whatever people need to do it to?
They'd have to have a budget, they don't have a budget though.
Well, I thought we had, didn't we have $500 in?
Yeah, we got an off budget, $500 for them, but what do we have to do to let them spend it that we don't have control over it?
Because $500, it's under our jurisdiction for them, but why?
Do they have a treasurer on that committee?
Do we?
Yeah. Jerry's the treasurer.
Are you the treasurer?
Throw you a checkbook?
Nope.
I, but I just as soon investigate how we can, instead of them having to come to us every time.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I don't know how we're going to do it.
Well, if, if we.
June, I would guess.
Well, then the selectmen, but if we can agree, then we can explore.
But why can't we just say that and at the end of every quarter, they send us a list of what they paid?
Well, I think we have to figure out how to.
Because they got to go give it to June.
Who has paid and she has signatures.
And she's not going to accept it without authorization.
I mean, it may be something that they say is in the enabling bylaw that started them in the first place. But if we, if we vote to pursue it, then we can actually do that.
Okay, let's, Dolly says pursuing it and.
And so is that what you're suggesting?
Everybody go before the next meeting.
We do everything in our power to free up the money so they can, yeah.
Okay, you second that?
Second it.
Everybody agree after suing the Economic Development Committee, paying their own bills? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
$500 isn't exactly the keys to the kingdom.
Well, hey.
There's some people in this.
Yeah.
Okay, possible changes to the affordable housing bylaws and senior residential development. Affordable housing, inclusion of affordable housing requires senior residential developments to have affordable housing. And the bylaw for senior residential development requires that you can't have anybody under 16 living there. Which means you can't, it can't be considered affordable housing. So we got a conflict with our bylaw that one's saying you got to do this, the other one says you can't do it. So there's two ways of doing this.
Why can't it be affordable?
Because you can't have age discrimination on affordable housing. And our bylaw for senior residential development has a, has a age discrimination on it, can't be anyone under 16.
So the DHCD issued a letter in the spring that said, given the federal guidelines for discrimination, age discrimination in housing, fair housing and all that stuff. You couldn't call affordable housing, housing that didn't allow individuals under 18. So when you, when you look at the text more closely, what the federal guidelines say is that in, in, in senior housing, no, no age restricted housing for persons 55 years of age or older, to the extent permitted under federal and state law, including the Federal Fair Housing Act as amended and Massachusetts General Laws, is not required to exclude persons 18 years of age or older. It's not required to exclude. Nothing in this policy is intended to prohibit compliance with applicable federal and state legal requirements, e.g. the requirement that at least 80% of the occupied units in a housing, in the housing are occupied by at least one person who is 55 years of age or older. So you can, you can have the stipulation that the housing is occupied by at least one individual that's over 55. And you can go up to 100%. I asked them and they said, yeah, you can go all the way to 100% of the housing in the senior unit that has to have someone over 55. But the minute you put in the language that excludes individuals. So if selection or occupancy policies, special permits or other zoning approvals or underlying zoning would exclude persons 18 years of age or younger from occupying those affordable units, it has not to approve affordable units if, whether they're a LIP or local action units regardless. So DHCD is restating the policy at this time, given the inquiries on this subject.
Yeah, our bylaw says children and senior residential developers, children under 18 mean that residing in dwelling in a senior residential development for more than six months in any nine-month period.
Okay.
And that, so if you have that restriction, you can't count it as affordable housing.
So let's take the restriction.
And we just take that out?
We can take, we could change, we got to change one or the other.
Change that.
Change that.
Well, what was the intent? Was the intent to make places available for seniors to live? Or the intent to make places for seniors that have no kids bothering them?
Well, the other part of it is that occupancy rules or policies, in addition to the LIP-required affirmative fair housing marketing and residential selection plan, cannot exclude. So even though our bylaw changed, in their case, if, if they were to come in today with their existing set of bylaws and condominium agreements, they are specific about.
Yeah, they'd have to change that.
So, so in entering into any new program, we'd, we'd have to make sure that we were.
If we pulled it out of the bylaw and then their, their general condo documents were challenged in court, the town would be like, we already have a provision, we're clean with the way.
They couldn't do it before because they have to send their condo documents.
That has to go in when you apply for the.
But I'm saying some smart aleck in your unit, you know, your thing challenges your condo docs. And you'd have a litigation situation at hand.
Challenge a condo?
Yeah, as being, you know, not fair to housing or too restrictive or something like that.
Going forward?
Yeah, going forward.
Not a grandfather.
Exactly, right.
So condo, condo docs, occupancy rules, policies, all that stuff have to be in.
But I say if we strip it out of the underlying law, then as far as the town's concerned, we're on the right side.
So I would take that sentence out of that.
I think we just got to, rather take this, just change that, there should be no age restrict. First part that says.
Just take it out. Just take it out.
Take it out.
I don't know.
Okay.
Nope. A says each unit shall be occupied by at least one person over 50 years of age or older. I want to change that too.
Why?
Because if you got every unit, well, we had this.
It's a perfect setup for the guys that have a second marriage instead of family.
Right, and, and while a second guy dies, everybody else has got to get out.
No, no, you just get another one in.
No, well, we had it ready, we, my condo association, they hired a lawyer to change the condo documents because they had a case where a man died and his widow was under, under 55.
Yes.
And according to the condo documents and according to the bylaw, she's going to get out.
No.
Clear out.
So what did you do?
So they changed it, they changed, so she was, I think she was 53. So they went and they changed the condo documents, that the widow has two years to get out. So by that time, she would be 55.
Now, the other projects that I was looking at say the same thing.
More trophy wise.
If someone dies and the remaining partner is under 55, they have two years to relocate.
Yeah.
If they comply, then they could stay. If they comply, then they could stay, but...
I don't think that's even necessary either, because the, it only has to be occupied by 80%, why do we require 100% occupancy in our bylaw?
Because we decided it was gonna be a senior residential overlay district, right?
Yeah, I see, but do we, do we need the, do we need the 100%? Do we have to have, like I say, this, the widow's got two years to get out.
100% what?
100%.
Compliance?
100% of the units have to be supplied. Somebody has to be over 55.
It's a senior group, I would think it'd have to be.
So they gotta get, well, right now, according to our bylaw, we don't give them any time.
Well, that'd be another change I'd make, though. I'd allow a, a period of time for someone to leave if they didn't comply, if someone passed away, I suppose.
Or find another spouse.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and you wanna give them a reasonable amount of time.
Or it doesn't have to be married, right? They can just go, get somebody off the street.
Get a rental room to...
Yeah, rent a room to some old guy down the block.
Get a homeless person.
At least one person 55.
What difference?
You wanna, you wanna put some, you wanna change the bylaw to put this, this provision if someone dies, I can get you the condo document, the way they, they put it.
This is one of those problems.
That's not a bylaw.
That, that language is in other town, over 55 bylaws.
Other towns?
Yeah. I, I was reading it in the last week while I was reviewing this stuff.
I'm just gonna change this part that says, children under age 18 may not resign, there shall be no restriction on the age of other occupants of the dwelling. No wage restriction.
Now we just take the sentence out.
Just take her out.
Why do you have to leave the sentence in there?
Excuse me, but that's gonna defeat your purpose of having the quietness and the attitude of a senior district if a guy my age, and I have a granddaughter or something with three kids, without that age restriction, all of a sudden, I'm living there, my granddaughter's there with three kids who are going to school, and running around making noise until nine o'clock at night.
Well, your two-bedroom unit isn't gonna provide probably the accommodation for...
All right, or one kid, but I'm just saying...
I know, I think you're right. There is the potential now to see a couple of those units in the project probably have some kids.
And that's what I thought you were trying to avoid.
Well, we're trying to avoid not being able to count affordable units that we create in a senior residential overlay district.
All right, can I, can I bring up another idea for you? The senior units in mind, because my infrastructure is so high on that beautiful piece of land I'm trying to do something with, is definitely a burden. Instead of, you say, okay, instead of you putting your 10, 15% senior units across our palm with gold, so that we can put it into a fund that can be used for seed money on some of the other ideas you've been speaking of.
You know, and I...
Building ghettos.
Part of me, part of me is, would look at that and say, you know, there's some potential. But the problem I have is, is twofold. One is, money in our hand means responsibility to construct and, and maintain and go on and on and on, and we, if we had it, if we were linked in, and we're not yet, with some entity that could accommodate the construction and oversight of affordable units on our behalf, then you'd say, yeah, that probably makes some sense, and we might very well move in that direction, but we're not there. And then the other part of it is, the, the objective of our inclusionary zone of bylaw has always been to mix that affordable housing stock throughout the community and not just isolate it in, in pockets. So...
Yeah, but that payment, I, I thought about that payment, it brings up, well, how much do we, how much do you give to not build affordable housing? And what does the town do with it?
Well...
And who in the town administers it? Who's looking at all that?
I guess what I'd be looking at is if somebody's gonna build an apartment complex, apartments are nice because you get credit for all of them, if you build enough, you know, your apartments and even the market rates count, or they used to, I don't know if it's been changed.
They're for rent, are they?
Yeah, they're for rent. So you take, the builder, look, you're required to put in 15% affordable, under our law. As many other affordables as you would like to put in, we'll give you a $10,000 check out of that fund. So he's getting subsidized, he worries about building it. And he says, okay, well, geez, that young man, numbers work, or a $20,000 check, whatever. And he says, yeah, I'll do 30 of them instead of 15, that I'm required to do in 100 units, just for an example, I'll do 30 for you. And you say, okay, here's 150,000, off we go, now we've got 30 apartments that are affordable, we're that much closer to our goal.
Well, we're a town of, we're gonna be a town of about 200 housing units in 30 or 4, 2,000, in about 30 or 40 years, and we're gonna have 10% of our housing stock, well, let's, let's say we're gonna be 1,600 units at the next census.
About the same as Bolton.
200 of our units are apartments, and two, and, and 200 of our units are affordable out of 1,600.
I'm not sure if you ever made the...
Why would we then wanna build more apartments? I, I mean, I think we've satisfied that, that demand.
Okay, if you've made your 10% and have got that covered, you're very, you know, you aren't many towns that...
No, no, we're not, and that's the thing that we can hang our hat on. You know, we've accomplished the affordable goal, we've accomplished the apartment goal, we've accomplished the cohousing goal, we've accomplished the, the over 55 goal, clearly, we've accomplished the senior housing goal in my mind with Brook Lane, I mean, Northbrook 1 and 2, we're as diverse a community with 1,600 units as you're gonna find anywhere. And I think Jay's comments about, you know, it's time to begin to focus on that single-family housing block that keeps enough kids in the school system so that we can keep that viable is where the attention needs to go now.
Yeah, I think we gotta look at our affordable inclusion, inclusion of affordable housing, we gotta look at a change to that.
Well, it doesn't provide affordable housing. We've never seen a unit built. So you can look at it two ways. You can look at it that...
The over, the six and higher.
Yeah, you can look at it that, in a way that says, as a result, we're seeing a depressed single-family housing development, and there may have been a period in time when that made sense, but that may not be the case anymore. So, you may wanna massage the inclusionary zone of bylaw to bring it, so there's incentives that other towns include in theirs that we don't have in ours, you know, I mean, that...
Look at the affordable housing we did down on Alden Drive, and then we had to take it back because they said they couldn't sell them.
Yeah.
What do you want? What, keep, people show up with five units instead of six units, and Mark doesn't have room for six on Beach Hills.
We're not getting where we wanna be.
Same with the guys on West Street.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, they were gonna do six and said, oh, wait a minute, no, it didn't make sense. And, and that's what both of these outfits are saying, is that they build over 55s, but, you know, the math is beginning to crush them, too.
Yeah, well, you look, you look at the senior residential developments or like that, you got condo fees, now people can afford to buy the house, but then they gotta be able to afford the condo fees and...
Yeah.
Or we, or even if, even we had a housing development, they build a big house, and they got, they can get this big house that looks like all the other big houses in the neighborhood at a cheap price, but they can't upkeep, keep the upkeep.
Now, you can argue that the inclusionary zone of bylaw is gonna put us in a position where we're not gonna see any more over 55s, we're not gonna see any subdivisions greater than five, the five-unit subdivisions we're gonna see are gonna be small-scale, single-family, fairly, I mean, working off of bigger acreages, so they're gonna be expensive units. You know, they're, they're gonna accomplish one of the goals that you had about, you know, make sure that we keep that part of the housing spectrum sustained.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe if you patch in something like Ron's talking about, or duplexes, you, you balance off the other end and we're fine, you know, we just, we live with that. Do we want many more over 55s? I, you know, I think one's enough. We've got two, two's enough, you know, I, I can't see us building three or four or five, because then you, you get, the first time, I mean, we, we've always talked about what happens if a block unites with a common objective and shows up at town meeting and, and votes something in. Now, you know, that hasn't happened, but if we look at the people who voted at the last town meeting, out of 170, I think you would see a higher percentage of folks from Sawyer Hill than you've seen from other parts of town.
They come out as a block for every meeting.
Right. But, but specifically at this, I mean, and, and do I worry about that? I mean, I thought it was great because they voted for stuff that I wanted to see pass.
But they're not betting that always, sir.
But you may be in a situation where you wanna do something with schools and three senior overlay districts, you know, come in and say, now, do I think that's likely to happen? I watch the people at Brook Lane and I say, no, I mean, these are objective, participatory folks that show up at town meeting, understand the issues, you know, they're gonna vote the right way, they're gonna look at the best interests of the town. But this, you know, you still end up asking yourself, do the players change over time? And, you know, what happens if? So, the, those are the types of questions I have.
I agree with you on all that you said, however, the thing you need to take into consideration is the population is aging.
Yeah, 'cause we're like, we, Jay and I went to that meeting, we're the second oldest average-age town in southern Worcester County.
Right.
Westbrookfield's the oldest. I mean, that makes sense out on the other side of Worcester, but to be east of Worcester...
I'm not gonna die next week to change that.
To be, to be east of Worcester and be old is, is not, that doesn't follow the, the plan, and it's because we're not building housing, although we're building a lot of housing. You know, you look at our population growth compared to towns around us, and we're accelerating faster than a lot of them, and the 200 apartment units.
Yeah, be bumping short time.
And, you know, Chris's project...
Most of the senior housing is condos or apartments, and if you're building condos and apartments, you want city water and city sewer.
Yeah.
So most of them are in big, I mean, Framingham, I'm sure, has more senior housing than Maryland, but the percentage is off.
Sure. Well, they accomplished a lot of that with the, with the apartment buildings, because there's some big-ass apartment buildings.
Yep.
What?
Large apartment.
Large.
Oh.
Yeah, he, he didn't mean to say that.
I didn't mean to say that.
How much, how much would a package plant cost? If you had to put a package plant in, cost, a million and a half?
It's well over a million.
Yeah, a million and a half, all right, so...
People, they, developers frown on...
Yeah, absolutely.
Frown on it, they hate them.
Right. So that's the only way you're gonna get a big apartment block in here is a package plant.
Yeah, it's...
So it goes back to your infrastructure, and you throw that with the land costs, and now it doesn't become viable, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, it, you sort of, if you hit your head on that 10,000 gallons a day, and you have to go to a sewage treatment plant, what is it, about 110, I think, 120 units, to get back to where you were.
Obviously, the more you put into it, the more, to phrase the cost, is like I...
Yeah, but you can't, you can't build at 80.
Yeah, you're not gonna go 80.
So you get a double, you get a double the size.
Yeah, you're gonna go way up to offset the cost of that plant.
So you're doubling the size almost.
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, at 66, I would've had to go, you know, 130 units up there if I went into a...
And you still wouldn't have been happy about it.
No, I would've, just about, you know, been in the same place financially, just...
Right, with a lot more headaches.
A lot more headaches, exactly.
So, we're back to the, the affordable housing and the senior residential development, and we're saying we take out that, that sentence on me.
Yeah.
Just take out that, that portion.
Okay. The one question I do have is, where people are downsizing, and I've seen developments where, where you have an over 55-type development, you struggle to get people who are qualified for the, for the affordable component of it, because typically people are, like you said, they're downsizing, they're selling, they have assets, they're selling something to move in there, and just as soon as they're selling something, they don't...
They gotta water money.
They have too, they have too much, too many assets, they don't qualify, so it, there's a compatible, a financial compatibility there, too, that I think you should consider.
Or at the other end, they're too broke to get the mortgage.
Yeah, true, true.
If they qualify, the bank doesn't wanna talk to them.
Yeah.
Right. So, I, I mean, looking at the big picture, that's some, that's another, the reality, another reality component of it that I think you, you need to look at.
We've done a lot for seniors as a society, you know, your senior housing project, that is, I guess, part of Section 8 or whatever, Bolton's got one, you know, almost every community now has something for affordable, subsidized senior housing. So we don't have a lot of seniors, you know, living in cardboard boxes, so to speak. So, I think I'll go home. I came in here trying to give them money, I can't even give them money.
Still gonna try.
He's gonna try.
Eloise, how much money do you have now?
I have 130, 140.
What did it start at?
I think 160,000.
So we've spent $30,000 in a decade?
That sounds like you, Mr. Wheeler.
Well, for a housing production plan.
Yeah.
The other alternative...
We can pay for plans for quite a while.
Steve put it throughout, well, when I put affordable housing someplace else, other part of town.
Have a good evening.
We'll see you.
Good night.
All my details will point you.
Where, where would, if we build affordable housing on the required, and the senior residential development have 15% affordable, it builds it someplace else, but where would he build it? Would he build a residential agricultural district or would he be other type?
Steve talked about building it on the parcel right next to the over 55.
Build it on the one that Mark wants to, put those, all those houses that...
And that's what he was talking about.
Put an apartment.
Was putting an apartment right there.
He wants to put an apartment there, do I?
Well, now, if Mark is out, there's, the town has control of the, what, the 12 acres from Senni.
Yeah.
We have the 10 acres that we're still potentially open to donating, so, because the issue that Mark was having was that there wasn't, with the 12 acres that was part of Senni's, there wasn't enough area to actually build anything. We still have that 10 acres that could, and I don't, maybe that, that's, that's a...
How many affordable would you have to put, build on that, what, seven or eight?
It'd be nine.
Nine? Okay, well, that's like seven or eight.
Yeah, 14%, if you're at 66, well, depending on how you round your numbers, it's, yeah...
Next time.
Depends if you're rounded up or you're rounded down, we're looking at approximately nine.
So that, that, with Mark, you could build nine affordables there.
Yeah.
Make it 12, and have a long, long cushion.
Well, we say 15%, if you build 15%.
Right. If you gotta bang for the buck, I mean, if, if you're building a building, throwing an extra three units on, four units on, it's short money.
Yeah, but that will be affordable.
If you build on those apartments, they will be.
You can get credit forever, you can get credit for them.
Well, I'm, 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 my concern is once we let this cat out of the bag, the guy over on West Street, he says, oh, I could build my sixth house if I build a, to, build a small affordable apartment. affordable apartment down the block or some other place. And we want, and we want people coming in with big developments and then put apartments all over town? I don't think it would...
You need, you need commons.
Do you have a special permit?
Yeah, if you tie it with a overlay, then you, then you kind of handcuff them again.
I'm afraid we're gonna get in a bad spot going down that way. Everybody comes in with a, with a housing development that build an apartment house someplace else.
Is that even allowed?
What's that?
Is that even allowed?
Build an apartment house?
I thought...
We'd have to change the zone, inclusionary zone in bylaw.
The state, the state allows you to...
Take the money around.
Have the affordable units not in the same location and...
Well, they just build affordable units.
Just build the affordable. I thought they wrote somewhere they had to be similar and...
That's because we wrote that.
Say, what's that?
In the same project, you can't say, oh, yeah, I'm gonna build a...
When you're just trying to say, these are affordable and these are perfect goods.
There's many towns that have, there's usually three options that I've seen is, one, build it on-site, which is what you have in your bylaw, two, an option for a fee in lieu, or three would to either...
Build it off-site.
Build it off-site or buy something off-site and make that affordable, which may not be, I think, a bad option in Berlin if you have some of the older housing stock that someone could, a developer could purchase it reasonably, make some improvements to it, bring it up to code, and then that could be part of, that could be included as some of the affordable housing stock. But of course, he'd have to build it, make improvements to it, and then sell it at an affordable rate. So, that could take some older housing stock in town that may be run down, that may not be as desirable, have some, have it get fixed up and basically become purpose.
I think we gotta do something...
That's an interesting...
But we gotta do something for Steve, we gotta tell Steve, you know, if you build that, what we're saying now, what we have is, he has to build six affordable units or seven.
Nine.
Nine.
Twelve. Could he build one house and put two units so that on the outside, it looks like one?
Well, these would be, what he was looking at doing was doing duplex style or a mix of singles and duplexes. And not going to threeplexes or, but if he had an option to, I think it would be, because I've seen other developers look at doing it on other projects, is buying something off-site that they can fix up and, and that include, that counts as they're affordable, as opposed to building it on-site, buying something throughout the town. And I think it still achieves the goal of having affordable housing dispersed throughout the town, you know, not having, not building any slums.
Well, we don't want economic segregation.
Right, so you could pick up houses that, it might be an old house that, you know, you could pick it up reasonably, fix it up, and then...
But how would we restrict that? I mean, somebody can build affordable housing in one section of town, and the next guy comes in and, he's gonna build in that same section of town, affordable, and now it becomes affordable housing.
Get them.
Get them. Thank you.
The lots in town are pretty much, what, two-acre, two-acre lots here, two-acre lots there, so, or mixed, I, you'd have to, it would be on a case-by-case basis. The applicant would have to come and say, I'm gonna buy one house here and renovate it and create that as affordable. And, you know, as houses come up for sale, it's not like you're gonna buy a whole street of houses, you can pick up whatever comes on the market, you can pick up one here, you can pick up one there, as, as a unit or a house would come on the market, you can pick it up and, and make an affordable unit that would be deeded as affordable and sold as affordable.
Do you see many developers actually doing that?
I have one who's hot to do it.
Yeah, but has anybody actually done it that you know?
I'm trying to think of anybody. I have one who's, he has a development, same thing, as opposed to even donating money, he's, he has the option of donating money to the, to the town, fifty thousand dollars a pop, he said, but if I can buy something for two hundred thousand dollars, put ten thousand dollars into it and then sell it for, I think it's, the number's one ninety, goes, instead of paying fifty thousand dollars, I can pick something up, fix it up, make it affordable, and it's only gonna cost me twenty or twenty-five with a commission.
That sounds possible.
Run, run this, so, in the case of the project you're talking about, where you have a requirement to build nine affordable units, are you proposing to find nine affordable, nine properties in town?
You have to find, you have to find nine around town.
Yeah.
And in Berlin with the...
It'd take you a couple of years.
I think that would be hard to...
Take forever.
You wouldn't do them at, say, after the first, say, six or seven units.
Maybe two years, yeah.
Find one. And it might be tough because of the limited housing stock in town.
And the renovation costs and...
Yeah, I mean, it depends, it's a case-by-case basis, but yeah, I mean, it could, depends on how crazy you're gonna go, if you're bringing up the code.
It seems like it'd be more practical if you could buy a multifamily...
I agree.
...structure and...
I agree.
Fix that up, but single families, I can't imagine.
I think with the...
I mean, all this, this is good talk about the different ways, but we gotta change the bylaw to do anything with this.
Right, right.
So, do we know, like, this bylaw was voted in the town meeting at one time, right?
Yeah.
The only issue is, it's hard to tell when people were voting for it, whether they were voting to make more housing available to people over fifty-five, or were they voting to make housing available, like Steve was talking about, where there aren't any kids making noise after nine o'clock at night?
No.
You don't think so? But that's the two, there's two provisions together, right?
Right. They, I mean, the group that came in was, well, it was an individual who flipped it to Pulte, and we didn't know it was gonna get flipped. When it was presented, it sounded as though the individual was gonna be the developer, but he was just a front.
Yes, well, that's what Chris was doing too.
And so, as it, as it marched, well, I think, I mean, that project's, I mean, I think they're actually gonna, Sergeant and Chris are the developers.
No, he's planning to sell.
He's planning, he and Sergeant are planning to sell it to a...
I thought that's what he said.
I think they're marketing it.
Yeah. I think that's likely with a lot of these, is that someone spends a couple of years trying to get...
I mean, I think the likelihood of their moving forward with it is, is one thing, the likelihood of their selling it to another party that specializes in this when they look at the affordability issue is gonna be a hard sell, right? Unless they're really good at sharpening the pencil.
But you, you think the purpose of putting, the driving force here was to make more housing...
Which was senior residential development or affordable housing?
Yeah, was to make more housing...
They're two separate things.
The senior residential...
Was to make senior housing.
Was to make senior housing.
They're tax bases and not a lot of kids in the school to put a burden on the school.
Well, kids at school, it's not, it's not the noise of the kids in neighboring properties that's keeping the kids out of school. I thought we were gonna try to soften up on that a little bit.
We are, and that was a while ago, so, you know, that's why...
That's twenty-something years ago.
Yeah, things have changed.
That's right.
We were at, we were in a situation where we were beginning to wonder about capacity in school systems and now you're wondering about inability to fill, so, you know, everything always runs that way, so.
Stricken that out makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Just, you don't wanna say no limit, the reason, the reason I wanna say no limit on the other, other people is, so they don't put into their condo documents, because it's, doesn't say we can't limit it.
Yeah, I think we gotta be careful how we structure it, but we can look at what other communities have done. I think we're in general agreement about our goal and our willingness to make the change, it's just, we need to, we can look at what...
Let me work something, bring it up next time.
Yeah.
That brings, brings us back to this, this new senior residential development that we got going, and he would have to build the fifteen or the nine, nine in there, and do we, we can't make any allowances for it, I don't see we doing anything. Do we wanna do anything? We wanna keep it so applies to everybody equally, anybody that builds a development of any type has to have fifteen percent affordable.
I think it needs to be reviewed and it would be modified system-wide.
Yeah, I think we got a little more discussion on this, on how we do it, but now, I think we gotta, we gotta let, I think we gotta let Steve know, I think he, he was, talking to him, he was under the impression, and I think that he was given this land for Mark to build it so that the town could swap land, so he was doing a favor to the town.
Oh, he's helping town.
He was helping the town out.
He was helping himself out.
Well, he felt that he was helping the town out, so therefore the town would be a little lenient to help him out, but that's not the way we're feeling.
We're not really valuing the land swap.
Yeah, we don't, we don't... So, we're inclined to keep the affordable housing by law right now, the way it is, we're gonna look at it later, but anything we look at is not necessarily, may or may not help Steve out anyway.
Right.
I don't, don't, don't think we're gonna lead Steve down the, down the path, oh, we're gonna do something so you don't have to build affordable housing in your senior residential development, but we're not heading that way.
But just, with our bylaw, does he have the ability to, to build a separate unit somewhere? We don't allow that, so maybe we should consider that. Think if he may, on his extra ten acres, he could put a multifamily up to get the affordable requirement, right? Maybe we should consider adding that to our bylaw.
The ability to provide it off-site then?
Yeah.
Which may be, it could be, it just, it just so happens in this instance, we have an extra acreage. In other cases, it may not be that they have extra acreage and they could go and buy an existing home that's for sale and, or build a, or find another multifamily somewhere and renovate it.
Yeah.
But it just gives you options.
One of the, as we were negotiating, water and sewerage, water for your facility might have been potentially coming from the river Run site.
Correct.
So, if you end up on the footprint that you're talking about initially, supplying water and sewerage both, do you, do you need to utilize some of that excess acreage that was outside of that initial building area, or are you all set?
We'd have to, actually, we took a look at the development next door and for what you have for a public water supply well and what you have for a radius on, on that, and we could, we'd be able to have a well site on, on this property.
Yeah, 'cause some of my neighbors were saying, what about our well, if they build that over there, are they gonna...
I would be...
Would they, were you sucking up our groundwater or something?
We'd be removed from...
So, your zone one is how big?
Some of it depends on the draw from the well, but I think yours is like a hundred and twenty-five foot.
Radius?
Radius.
So, that's like the minimum?
Yeah, that's what Ron...
They don't go any smaller than that anyway, do they?
No, so, we'd have the room, we have the room to do it. I don't think we'd have a four-hundred-foot radius, but, you know, if we were at a hundred and fifty-foot radius, we could do it easily.
Yeah. And you were planning on doing septic on your site anyway.
Yeah, we have to.
So, but the radius you're talking about is, does it end up being on the western side of the property, so it interferes with that development of the neck, or?
The grade jumps up.
Right.
And the neck, you know where that slope is?
Yeah.
It would be probably in that area.
So, does that preclude you being able to do an apartment-type unit on that?
No, that would probably, no, what we'd have to do is, if we did something, we'd probably be back in that bowl area and then maybe put the well back towards the ten acres that was gonna go to Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think two over fifty-fives right now is enough on our plate, so I'm not eager to entertain a third one until we let the dust settle from number two. Number two may struggle as a result of the affordable component, you know, I mean, we may find that that one doesn't keep moving along anyway, in which case, you know, then you look at another possible second for, you know, over fifty-five and say, yeah. I'm not, I guess, but I'm not in the mood to look at a third one, this town meeting necessarily.
Yeah, so, we're not anxious to change the affordable, why more to allow, to allow a senior residential development?
Well, I'm not sure that changing it would, would put people in the right mind to vote for it at town meeting anyway.
Yeah.
But, and I do think we need to modify the inclusionary zone at some point, because it's...
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We need to evaluate what it actually is accomplishing. If, if it's, if it's forcing everybody to build small subdivisions scattered around town and that doesn't bother us, then maybe it's accomplishing what we want it to indirectly, you know, and...
Well, except that we're not getting any affordable housing in it.
Well, we're gonna be forty units above where we need to be, which means we could build four hundred additional housing units throughout.
That analysis Steve came in with a couple of weeks ago, that showed what we have now and what we're gonna have for the next fifty years.
You know, I looked at that and, and that's a little on the high side, but still, we got, we got, if we, if we build, you know, if you look at what we've built historically other than over, you know, other than affordable over the last decade, you know, it's... We've built thirty-seven units in, in the last eight years that aren't affordable, condos and fortyBs and all that stuff. So, you know, we're not even building five houses a year. We used to be building fifteen.
Fifteen.
But even if you jump back to fifteen and you were four hundred units over, if you were shrewd about dealing with affordable by working with Habitat for Humanity and taking tax titled land and putting some of the town's money into it from the Community Preservation Act and the money that she's got, you know, already toward subsidizing some affordable units, buying up some properties, we've got a provision that, you know, older structures or even a new structure with, can have multiple affordable units in it if they're all affordable, you know? We've, no one's ever utilized that, we did that for Arthur years and years and years ago with his, he had a site on...
He wanted to build four units. He wanted to build four units in a single building.
Yeah, and we said, we'll put a provision in the bylaw, and we did, so that's there. You know, that, that might be an avenue for us to look at in terms of... You know, that, that might be an avenue for us to look at in terms of people being able to go offsite and build, you know, if, if you wanted to build a ten-unit subdivision and you wanted to build two multi-family units that had affordable, you know, different parts of town. That, that provision's there. We were satisfied with it years ago. We need to revisit that one probably too. I mean, it may be that we, we wanna pull, like we've talked, you know, Karen in for some further discussion about what's next, you know? Like you've said, she focused on affordable, but we wanna look at the bigger housing picture and we need some help, you know? We wanna spend a couple thousand dollars having her come in and brainstorm with us. We could, she'd probably be happy to do it.
I, I hear you saying, uh, we, we have one senior residential development. We're building another one, we should let the dust settle. You, you seem to incline not to support building the senior residential development.
At this time, no. I mean, it, I think we've got, we've got one, we've got another one on the way. Do we, do we want to have?
We do want a third one.
You know, do you wanna have two hundred units of senior housing? That's, um, in addition to the units you've already got at Northbrook?
You know, we, we...
We're already in Old Town, you know, so...
We, we may come with this...
Sorry.
Is it, a citizen's petition, we may very well recommend against it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, so, at this stage. I mean, that doesn't mean I can, you know, I was changing mine, but I don't see the overwhelming merit.
You know, I, 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 I feel we gotta let Steve know he doesn't have a slam dunk. And, and as I say, I think he came in and talking to him on the phone is that, you know, hey, I'm doing this for the town, giving this land so they can get that land, and maybe, maybe the planning board or the town or something, you know, give him some leeway and slack and, and it's not there.
Yeah, with that, with, from what I understand, that, that's, that, that land swap, or at least with the, with the Senes land and, and that's not happening, just from what I understand. So I guess that's off the table, so it's, you know, the ten acres. If, if there's something else that could work out mutually with the town with Senes land and this ten, ten acres, we're open to that. But in terms of the land swap for Mark and all that, like, that's off the table. Not to say that there might not be another type of benefit for both parties with, you know, with the land that you have over, over on River Road. And that ten acres, if there's something else, a separate deal, I'm just throwing that out there. There might be something, that might be a benefit to every, everybody for that, completely separate from obviously that other land swap. But in terms of the over fifty-five, I, I think the market would, would, would say whether it's, it's a value or whether it's, you know, wanted to be market-driven. I think that the land over on River Road West, um, it's isolated, it's a perfect, it'd be a good generator for, for taxes for the town with really no negative impact on the town. I think it's the highest and best use for that property. It's a much easier site to develop than the other gentleman's site. Site cost, it's, it's an old sand pit.
Yeah, I, I, I get that.
Infrastructure is easy. It could be a nice, a really nice standalone project, in our opinion. And I think it's a much more viable project.
Yeah, you know, when, when it's built, whether it costs a lot of money to build it or it didn't cost a lot of money, or it was very economical to build, it doesn't make any difference to the town.
It matters if it doesn't get done.
If it's a higher end, if it's a higher end, um, development that has obviously a, a, a higher tax value, it, it obviously generates more money for the town with, with no impact on town services, schools, no plowing, no trash removal, no, nothing.
Just an ambulance run.
Well...
I'm old, I can say that.
The occasional ambulance run. So that's from our perspective. We think it's, it's the highest and best use for that property. We think it would be a great project for the town.
Get taxes, what else could go, it's industrial, what industrial things can go in there? Did you have, get any idea of that?
In all honesty, I've been beating the bushes, looking for other options. We're looking at solar field, you know, try to throw a cell phone tower on it. I mean, there's, if you look at the zoning at what's allowed...
There were all sorts of marijuana cars down there.
Marijuana, potentially, I mean...
Sitting on a tower.
In, in, in that limited business zone, it, you know, you're not gonna put a restaurant on over there. You're not gonna build a bank.
Warehouse, maybe, that type of, a warehouse.
Highest investors for that one.
Yeah, and a warehouse, what is that gonna, you know?
I don't know.
Eight bucks, triple money.
Yeah, it's...
If you're lucky, in a lot of empty space.
Okay, I'll work on changing that bylaw here for next week. Come out with a proposed bylaw and...
When are you gonna get, what's her name, in here to sit with us?
Does that sound, we wanna have a comment? You wanna see if Karen wants to come? We can outline a few, and I outline a few ideas about what we talked to her about and send it around and people can add to it, and then we can ask her if that's something she'd... You'd like to come to that, wouldn't you?
Of course.
Would the whole, would the whole partnership like to come?
Uh, those that are around.
Around?
Karen's a fun person.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was probably something else I was supposed to ask.
Would that be at the...
Janet would kick me on whatever the...
Take this home with you, okay? See if it makes any sense to you.
I don't know.
Yeah. It's, you know, she's a consultant, so it functions, yeah, it'll be published.
Did everybody see our Christmas card and donation and our name to the children's hospital?
Yeah, that was nice.
You know, Children's Hospital saved my life when I was a baby. There's a lot of people have been not contributing because of that.
Is that a brand-new facility when you're there? So what'd you have, cancer?
Yeah.
In your leg?
Yeah, I have a scar that runs like this. They told my parents that...
So how'd they find it?
My father found it. I was nine months old and he had me standing on the bassinet and he reached down. He had me, his hand around my hip like this. And he reached down to get a piece of clothing, and his thumb went down my leg and he felt the tumors.
Oh, real soon.
Wow.
They saved my life twice, because the nurse that took care of me when I was born was sick and she gave it to me. So I went on a specialized diet for four years that they concocted in there. And, and then, when I was nine months old, they told my parents they would have to take the whole leg. And even if they saved the leg, it would, it would probably be stiff, you know, the joints wouldn't work. It was a Dr. Diamond, he was a young guy. Isn't that amazing?
It's amazing.
That was back in nineteen forty when there weren't the medicines around, you know?
God. So how long you laid up?
I don't remember it.
You, they kept you there for a quarter of an hour, probably?
No.
They didn't?
No.
Thank you.
I was home.
I grabbed the wrong bag?
I imagine I was on the move pretty fast.
Were you walking at nine months?
Do you think I could get away with this?
Yeah.
What are you talking about? Yeah.
Why not?
Walking at nine months?
This property, right?
Yeah.
Boy, you've always been exceptional.
Give me this, right?
I moved that we adjourned.
Sell me that.
Would the temporary chair move? Acknowledge that?
Hey, second...
What happened?
Second.
Second.
You're the temporary chair, you're gonna acknowledge it. He's gone. I moved that we adjourned.
Just because my chair is adjacent doesn't mean I'm a temporary chair.
Yes, it does. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm trying to turn off the tape so we can talk. Is it off?